Call the meeting to order. Invite you to join us, say, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. Star flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Kolpak, here. Pepcorn?
Here.
Strand?
Here.
Turnberg?
Here.
Mahoney?
Here.
Library. The library, in partnership with local gardening group Growing Together, is offering an indoor tomato seed starting workshop on January 28th at 6:00 PM at the Carlson Library with Jack Wood, founder of the Fargo's Tomato Seed Savers Club. No registration is required and all materials will be provided. The Normal Narratives 2025 Writing Project starts Friday, or starts, excuse me, February 1st and will be accepting submissions for poetry fiction and nonfiction writing through March 31st. This writing project is for adults and teens. Public Works. The residents are encouraged to vote for their favorite plow names online on fargand.gov/namoplow. Voting is open through January 27th. The top five names will be displayed on the city's plows this winter. Individuals who submit winning names will receive the Fargo gear and will be featured in a video, video shared by the city's social media channels. Some of the finalists' names are Betty Whiteout, Ladder Tot Hot Dish, Boom Chica Plow Plow, Buzz Ice Clear, Da Snow Chipper, Fargo Your Snow, Fargo Blizzard Buster, Plow Bunga, Ted Snow Sluzfahi, and Wheeler Snow Cleeler. Interesting. Fargo International Airport had its busiest record, busiest year on record. Airline passenger traffic in 2024 increased by 6% when compared to 2023, and the count for 2024 was 1,092,836. The Fargo Airport Authority had a net income of 2.47 million over budget at end of November, revenue of 984 over budget, and expenses are 1.4 million lower than budget. The airport's combined capital accounts are now at 49 million. They do have some applications with the state for additional 60 million, John, for the airport. Sounds like that's going well. And as all of us can see, the garage is coming up, should be done by August. And the addition is also going up at the same time, so we're making great progress out there. Fargo Human Rights Commission hosted the annual MLK Day celebration last night at Fargo Theater where awards were presented in adult, youth, and business nonprofit organization categories. Awards recognize community members who work exemplifies Martin Luther King's legacy and uplift human rights. A special thank you to Fed Edwards for his excellent work in organizing this event. And I heard you two commissioners had a great time last night, had great talent, kids were outstanding, right?
It was great.
It was great.
In fact, John, I think you said it was one of the best you've been at, right?
I think it was.
Okay. Finally, on January 9th, I presented the city, Fargo State of the City for the Fargo Moorhead-West Fargo Chamber of Commerce. We will take time to acknowledge that all city accomplished in 2024, while we're trying to look forward in 2025. Together, our city continues to grow, thrive, and inspire, thanks to the dedication of our residents, businesses, and team Fargo. Tonight, I want to show you the section of our State of the City videos. Tonight's video snippet will be a portion on, focused on the theme of strength.
Bolstering strength through collaboration, together tackling difficult tasks to better our region. In 2024, the city of Fargo advanced its multi-year plan to modernize its water tower infrastructure with the completion of the new North Fargo Mega Tower, the largest in the state. Replacing water towers dating back to the 1940s and 1950s, this state-of-the-art structure is designed to perform the work of three traditional towers. Once the older towers are demolished, the freed-up land will be available for redevelopment, creating new opportunities for growth in the community. Hector International Airport hosted a historic groundbreaking ceremony on July 1st, 2024, for the terminal expansion and parking garage. This project, funded by city, state, and federal funds, will truly take the regional airport to the next level by adding four additional gates and add a parking garage with 1,000 parking spots. This past year, the city of Fargo has been consistently working to address the root causes of homelessness. Visits by Milwaukee Housing Administrator James Mathie served as a catalyst for the Housing First Initiative that aims to provide housing, prevent evictions, and make homelessness a rare, one-time occurrence in a person's life. Our Harm Reduction Division continues to provide services such as winter warming for unsheltered residents and city employees across our departments rallied together to support our community by donating thousands of dollars to the United Way. The city of Fargo completed several major street projects in 2024. We saw the replacement of water mains in core neighborhoods and concrete rehabilitation on crucial roadways. But not all projects required excavators. In some cases, the city was able to give streets a facelift in a matter of days using the mill and overlay process like we saw on Fourth Street North in downtown. In 2025, be on the lookout for more roadwork, including the reconstruction of 32nd Avenue South from 22nd to 15th Street. The Fargo Moorhead Diversion Project continues to advance on schedule, keeping our community on track for permanent flood protection by 2027. On top of that, Fargo's in-town flood protection is 90% finished. The project will welcome a new leader in 2025 when Jason Benson begins his role as Executive Director in February. In August, Fargo City Commissioners unanimously approved Fargo Growth Plan 2024. The comprehensive plan, shaped by community-wide input from residents and stakeholders, offers a fresh roadmap for the city's future. The city of Fargo began upgrading its water meter systems in the fall of 2024. This upgrade will replace all water meters with digital ones, improving customer service, reducing water loss, and enhancing resource management for the entire community. Fargo has historically taken a conservative approach to adjusting rates for water, stormwater, and water reclamation utilities. However, as we look ahead, we've reached a critical juncture where rate increases are necessary to support the growth of our community and meet the needs of our regional partners. This process, which began with the approval of their 2025 budget, ensures the sustainability and reliability of our regional utilities, securing their operations for generations to come. In March, the city launched an enterprise resource planning system to streamline the work of our finance and human resources departments. This new software is revitalizing our digital systems by cutting down on paper transactions, reducing redundancy, and creating efficiencies.
Very good. Is there a motion to approve the order of the agenda? Does it move? There a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carried. Is there a motion to approve the minutes, the January 8th, 2025 regular meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I can't have the shortest meeting on record if you guys don't cooperate a little bit better on this. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion approved. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, item 1 through 26?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Turnberg?
Yes.
Pak?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Regular agenda. 2024 Downtown Business Improvement District Overview. Rocky Schneider to explain and Steve Sprague to introduce. Oh, Steve, you're gonna sit, huh?
Hi, I'm Rocky Schneider. I'm with the Downtown Community Partnership, and we are the administrators of the Business Improvement District. Also with me, we have Victor Heidkamp, our Operations Manager, and Elizabeth Worth from NDSU, who's our DCP Board Chair this year. Want to thank the, the city commission and the mayor for attending our State of Downtown event last Monday. It was a great event. We had about 120 people there, and I think what I heard was there's just a lot of positive outlook for the new year. We have some new businesses opening up on Broadway, and we lost some, some big kind of stalwarts in downtown, and we have a new space opening up in the old Burnbomb Spot, it'll be a Nova Eatery. And I just saw last Friday, too, they're starting to fit out the old Zambro's Spot, two-thirds of that for a new bodega and deli there. So looking forward to those new adventures downtown, but otherwise, here to talk about our bid. Have a little short presentation and some pictures for you. You all know this, but just to remind everybody what is our bid. It's the Business Improvement District. It's authorized by the state legislature and the local property owners, along with the city. And it allows a special taxing district to go above and beyond regular city services. We are the only one in the state. But it is not uncommon across the country, so these are all of the established business improvement districts that the company we work with called Block by Block that they operate. So you can see, it's, it's pretty popular in most metro areas that there's these, and it's been fun to meet and talk with a lot of these other administrators and learn, there's pretty much nothing they can't do. They use Michael's thing, there's, they can do anything, but they can't do everything. And so it's, it's been fun to kind of see that and learn from them. So just a quick history. This was a law that passed about 13 years ago, 14 years ago now, I guess, at the state legislature, and it went through an approval process. We went through a couple different renewals with the DCP as the bid administrator, and finally, in 2023, there was a five-year agreement, and so we are still operating under that. That is Victor up on his ladder. Our mission statement, the Business Improvement District works to improve and enhance the overall attractiveness and appeal of downtown Fargo. This is done by making sure our downtown is clean, safe, maintained, and properly promoted. So you'll see through some of our pictures and services that we provide how we do that. The city commission is ultimately the authority, and you have hired the Downtown Community Partnership as the administrator. We have a bid advisory group that meets, and along with Block by Block, which is our national partners that we work with for staffing on it, and then we take input from our downtown businesses. Our bid advisory committee that meets monthly, you can see the names on there. We also have a number of city guests that are invited each month as well. This is our bid team. Take a moment to appreciate them. They're out there, especially on days like today, I really appreciate them. They are the same staff that we've had all year, so it's great. We haven't had any turnovers, it's good retention. Think they really have a lot of pride in what they do downtown Fargo, keeping it safe and clean, and so just appreciate all of them. This is a quick snapshot of our financials, looking at the year ahead in 2025. We have an annual revenue of, you know, just under a million dollars. Most of that comes through business assessments on downtown properties. There's a couple areas of additional income where we operate some things on behalf of the city that just make more efficient sense for the bid team to do it in a downtown area. And then we have a number of rollover expenses that are sort of previously allocated that are included in that that we're gonna work on this year. I'm excited. Part of that previously allocated funding is a new pedestrian signage along Broadway and trying to work with the Park District and NDSU and some other partners downtown about seeing how we can expand that to additional areas off the main drags as well. You can see our annual expenses, how that breaks out. Most of that is our clean team, our clean and safe team. We have some maintenance that we do and beautification, including the Christmas tree lights that are out there all winter, along with the flower pots in the summer. And you see, we, our goal is usually to break even. Our downtown, about 72 blocks worth, is split up into five different zones, and we base the zones, there's a assessment multiplier based on each zone, and also the services are slightly different in each zone. But you can tell Broadway and Main Avenue is, is that Zone 1. So just for awareness, this cuts off a little bit on there, so apologize for that, but you can see, I, I put in here what the median amounts are for businesses. So in Zone 1, the, the sort of average or median business pays $900 a year. You can see that's where they get primarily the most services. In Zone 2, it goes down to 300, and then Zone 3 and Zone 4, which have the same assessment category, we break them out into different zones because there's a couple different services there, but they're paying about 170. And then the NDSU areas of downtown are Zone 5, but they're exempt from the district. So this is a long list, don't need to go through this, but this is our Zone 1 services. You can see the, our, our team in blue out there every day, they do a lot of, maybe I'll just show you the pictures, but a lot of cleaning, they do all the trash cans on Broadway, sticker graffiti removals, clean up the, anywhere on the right of way on the sidewalks, and then help out on the hospitality areas with people downtown. Zone 2, you can see it's just off Broadway, it's about Robert's Alley and, and the street's right off there, just loses a couple of the, the main things that they do on the sidewalks up and down on Broadway. Zone 3 and Zone 4, you take a, a more significant step down in both assessment and services as well, but we get out to those areas as well. And I'll show you some of the pictures because I think they're the most impactful. Doesn't look like this out there right now, but this is a good representation of the summer. You can see, we, we did get some new equipment this year, too, and so we try to stay on top of that, but we hose down a lot of biohazards. We have a lot of cleanup from the increased number of unsheltered that were downtown this summer, and we also have some pickup of, I'd say, minor vandalism, if you want to call it that. And so I, I mean, I think what they do is, is underappreciated, and so if you ever see them out on the street, please say thank you to them. They're all great people, and they work hard every morning to make sure everybody comes and downtown's reset, and it's just a good experience for everybody. And in the winter, they're out there, they do do a lot of snow removal. They don't do this for private businesses, but they help out, work very closely with Public Works, and when Public Works comes through and kind of pushes the snow up, they clean up, clean the bumpouts and around the streetlights and kind of keep the benches clear and the trashcans clear so they can continue to be used all winter. This summer, we also, as you know, we took over administration of Broadway Square, and bid played a huge part in that, maintaining that, and so you can see that red table there. We do get some additional graffiti that we take care of at Broadway Square and around. If you see people use graffiti, sometimes it's funny, but it's, it's a lot of work to remove, and so we always see an uptick in that in the summer, and it's been kind of going up the last couple of years, so we really hope people understand that this is a, a lot of work to clean up, but we also try to get to it right away because we found that if you get to it right away, it's, it's less worthwhile for them to even do. Again, apologize for some of the graphic pictures, but we do have a nightlife downtown that sometimes leads to unfortunate biohazards that could cause a number of problems, and so we try to, we try to clean those up before they create any health problems, but also so they don't get tracked around because if somebody steps and stuff, you can track it around everywhere. Try to take care of that. We also have a hospitality team that you see there engaging with folks and kind of works closely with the public that just needs help downtown, if they're lost, need directions, anybody they can assist, or business owners. And you can also see needles, we do pick up a lot of needles there in the upper right. This is a picture of some of our beautification efforts in the upper left there, thanks to Sophia Richards, who's Miss North Dakota. She brought this idea forward, we did a Love Your Downtown Day and had, I think, 30 or so volunteers work with bid to pick up garbage and, and such all around downtown, and it was a lot of fun. We're gonna try to do that every summer now. I think it was a, a good event and helps people appreciate what bid does, but also just keeping your neighborhood clean and safe. So there's the flower pots we do on Broadway and A Street, and then you can see the Christmas lights, the, the banner there on the mid-right, that's the new student collaboration we did with NDSU. We did 32 unique art pieces up and down Broadway and A Street, and then Buddy of the Bison, that's usually outside Dempsey's. Popular photo site, but it also takes some wear and tear, so it had a hole in its hindquarters, and so it's seen better days, so we got it fixed, and it'll be back out again in the spring. Here's some of the stats, if, and kind of tracking them year over year. You can see the amount of graffiti that's upticked a little bit in 2024 at 800 pieces of graffiti removed. The disinfectants, we go around and disinfect all the trashcans and benches and, and just keep those things from spreading undesirable diseases and germs and such. Our mobile outreach team is, again, ticked up a little bit. We had some more snow hours as well. Recycling and trash is, is remained somewhat consistent. We've taken over Broadway Square, too, so we have some of that split out in other things, if you're interested in how Broadway Square performs. But I always like to say, it's about 100,000 pounds of, of trash and recycling. I've no idea what that equates to, but it sounds like an awful lot of garbage, and so it's, it's, it's an impressive amount of work that we do to keep it as a fun event center downtown. And here is Victor. If you ever have questions, he knows everything, so hopefully you don't have tough ones, or I'll call him up. But otherwise, this is our team in front of the Christmas tree at Broadway Square, and, and just thank to, to them again, and thanks to Steve for working very closely with us through the administration of this. It was a pretty smooth year, we didn't have a lot of changes and, nor a lot of comments that we couldn't address right away with our, our business owners.
Any questions to Rocky? And you said something's going in the site where Zambros was as well, Rocky?
Yeah, it's a, I don't know how much to say, I guess it's a bodega and deli, and so we're really excited. They're just, there's some fit up they have to do, they're splitting two-thirds of the property out of the huge space that Zambros was, so I think there is still one spot that's open there, if anybody's interested. But otherwise, yeah, we're excited for that.
Very good. Thank you for your report, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Public hearings. Donald Kress. Public hearing on pines at District 7th Edition, approval recommended by Planning Commission 6424. Zoning change limited commercial with conditional overlay to limited commercial with conditional overlay and MR3 multi-dwelling residential with conditional overlay. First reading the rezoning ordinance and the plat of the pines on District 7th Edition. Donald Kress to explain.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. Donald Kress of the Department of Planning and Development. As the mayor stated, our item here tonight, the pines of the District 7th Edition is a minor subdivision and zone change. Your packet includes not only staff's report, but a ordinance prepared by the city attorney's office. Locate the property, here's the subject property, here's I-29 and 52nd Avenue, our landmark Walmart there. This property is largely undeveloped, there's a small lot up here, there's a Verizon store here, that's not part of our plat here tonight. But those of you who are, all Commissioners, we're here, the last time at our, at our commission meeting, we had a zone change right across the street here, which was a separate project, but so there's a lot of action going on down this part of town. Subject property looks like this, as noted, it's, it's undeveloped, here's that Verizon store, but it's undeveloped here. You can see the power line easement that cuts through all of South Fargo, there's the detention basin here. All the buildings are on adjacent properties, there's the detention basin, just a couple shots across 38th Street here. So it's a large undeveloped property. The current zoning is LC Limited Commercial with a conditional overlay. The proposed zoning is MR3, which is a residential zone, a multi-dwelling residential zone for the large piece here, and then the two remaining pieces here are limited commercial. The zoning, or the conditional overlay, which provides a variety of site development standards, you're familiar with these, you've seen them many times before, Commissioners. The original one on this was very complex conditional overlay, and so as this is being revised, it's a simplified and more straightforward conditional overlay that will apply to both the, the multi-dwelling section, portion of the property, as well as the commercial portions of the property. The subdivision plat here divides this large property into three lots, as you saw there, 1, 2, and 3, with a, an access easement down the middle here. This ledger, or this marking here indicates there's a negative access easement along 38th Street South, which limits the access points to one location here. And then they have the location that's already, already up here, you can see this driveway up here. So pretty straightforward subdivision of the property there. The applicant's representative, oh, and these are some of the conditional overlay standards here, again, you're familiar with, with these, the draft conditional overlay is included in your packet. The applicant's rec, Representative Brian Patengale of Houston Engineering is with us this evening and may wish to address the commission. Planning Commission's recommendation is shown on the screen and stated in your staff report. That concludes staff's presentation. Thank you, Commissioners.
Is there anyone, President, wishes to speak to this rezoning? Anyone, President, wishes to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Why did it take so long to come back to us? It started on 64.
We were working through some complications with the, with the easement there, there were a lot, with the more technical complications with the, with the plat. Took a while to sort those out.
Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Kolpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
I-29, recommendation to receive and file ordinance relating to conference center and city lodging tax. Eric Johnson came back from California, just to explain that to us, and he's gonna take the cold weather with him when he goes back.
That's right. This is, this is a tough one. I don't know if you heard, that there was an election on November 5th, and part of that was a ballot measure that was approved by the voters that authorized the city commission to pass an ordinance for a lodging tax, and what is before you is, is an ordinance for that purpose. It's really stage one of at least a two-stage process. It could be maybe an amendment or two after this one. But essentially, let me just explain the project briefly, and of course, it's in, it's in the materials. What the Home Rule Charter Amendment requires is that the city commission approve a request for proposal process to identify the location of the conference center, and as part of that, we expect developers to propose, you know, different types of projects. We would expect that to, a, a proposal to include perhaps a hotel that's either already existing, and this would go near that, or a hotel to be built. We expect the develop, there may be developers that want to build the conference center itself and hand it over to the city, or, or any number of possibilities, really. That's part of the, part of the process will be to identify what exactly the city commission wants to propose in their request for proposals. And in the end, you, the city commission, will decide what the project looks like, decide who the developer is, decide, and all of that, of course, includes the location. And only when that project is identified can the tax actually be started to, to be collected. It will be collected locally, this is a Home Rule Charter lodging tax, and that means it's just collected through Steve Sprague's office, the city auditor's office. He's already collecting a lodging tax of 3%, as you know, and this will be an additional 3% paid by, you know, hoteliers and so forth within the city of Fargo. So in any event, this is the first step, it really just, it creates the foundation for it, creates the foundation for you to select the RFP process. There are city staff members and the Convention Visitors Bureau already discussing and meeting to sort of make, put together, you know, the structure of an RFP process, and they'll come back to you, I believe, within the next meeting, or possibly two meetings, to give you a report on that. But for now, we're just looking for approval of a, a motion to receive and file this ordinance, and it goes on for first and second reading and final passage.
So Charlie Johnson has a pretty clear picture of what he's looking for, the convention center and/or a hotel next to it. I think Commissioners need to weigh in and visit with Charlie, kind of find out what's going on. If you want a brown bag, we'll have one just to have that discussion. Would like the Commissioners to clearly, because you're gonna choose what, what we get. If we do an RFP, it's gonna be the Commissioners that decide what it is. So rather going into this, I'd like us to have an RFP that we're comfortable with as a team that, yep, that's what I would like us to see, and then the RFPs can be made accordingly. Mike Reddinger will kind of work with us a little bit on that, but there is a committee that's gonna go and look at the RFPs, and we get in that conundrum, do we put a Commissioner on that committee or not put it on the committee? For instance, Pepcorn is on the Fargo Dome Authority, if Dave is on it, would that be a conflict because he may want to have it at the Fargo Dome? Those things, I don't know. But I mean, I think as a commission, you kind of figure out what you want in regards to this, because once whatever is chosen, the commission has to approve it, and then the tax goes into effect. So basically, I think we have to have input into this. So would, would request that you do that. Mike, appropriately to you or to Jim Gomor, or would you like that?
Mayor and Commissioners, by all means, if you have feedback, please direct it to me, I'm happy to visit with Charlie about that. Charlie's also gone to the effort to try and collect some names of people that he thinks could be willing to serve on an advisory committee, but as the mayor noted, this is really at the request of the commission, and all of the commission's directives and authorities will come from this body and, including the, the project to, to proceed in the RFP, so you're correct.
Commissioner Strand?
Thank you, Mayor, and Eric and, and Michael, I'm, I'm just curious. My head is more open to what a conference center could look like. For example, I would like us to explore, including a performing arts center in this conference center. And I, I don't know how at, at what point we can interject things like that, but we've been talking about that for decades. And if we could kill a few birds with one stone, I sure hope we can get that on the radar, and I'd be happy to be part of that conversation from the arts community.
Yeah, I, I mean, in the conversations that I've participated in, I won't speak for Charlie Johnson, but you know, he's, he's obviously been thinking about this possibility for years, if not decades, and I, I believe his intention is to try and have as open a process, seeking input from any and all proposers. So I think there's room for any kind of flexibility that you're looking for.
Any other discussion? Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make, I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Thank you, Eric, for drafting this, you didn't have to come back, we could have done it by teleprompter or whatever. Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Kolpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Yes. Aye.
Item 30, Commissioner Kolpak, I'd like Human Resources to provide an overview of employee exit interviews. We've heard a little bit about this, and Commissioner Kolpak, do you want to explain, please?
Sure. Last week, there was a story on some exit interviews that, with the Department of Health, and my understanding is there's a, a current following that, open me- um, and my understanding is there's a, a current following that, open meet, open records request for additional exit interviews from different departments. And so my hope here is just to understand the process so that residents of Fargo understand the process. We understand the value that, you know, Team Fargo is our number one asset as a city, and so how are we listening to our employees, whether they're, you know, working with their management team or they're leaving, and how do we value the input that we get as part of that engagement? Um, and so I've asked Jill to give us an overview of that process. So thank you very much.
Yes. Thank you for the invitation to speak on offboarding and exit interviews. Uh, so as Commissioner Kolpak mentioned, um, this evening, I really will be primarily focusing on an overview of, of the exit interview process and how that kind of works from start to finish. And then I also have some statistics that I want to share related to city exits as well. So offboarding is a term that's commonly, commonly used to describe really all steps taken when an employee ends employment, whether that's through retirement, resignation, or termination. And one of the most common aspects of, or I should say important aspects and common, um, is that knowledge transfer that needs to happen, um, within the department. So ideally, as part of the offboarding, the department head or a leader is meeting with that employee to talk about their responsibilities and how to transition that work to other team members. Often at this point, an informal exit interview might happen with department leaders as well, again, as they're discuss, discussing that transition plan. Um, once we receive notice that an employee is resigning or retiring, the HR managers will schedule a meeting with that existing employee, um, to complete the offboarding process. So during this meeting, several things are happening. They're discussing benefit continuation, accrual payout, final paycheck. Um, it's also an opportunity, you know, up, updating information so we know how to reach that employee once they leave employment. And of course, the exit questionnaire or exit interview, uh, is offered at that time as well. So an exit interview is really just an opportunity for an employee who's leaving the organization to provide their reason for leaving, to share their overall experience as a City of Fargo employee, to make recommendations related to the organization, their supervision, uh, could be compensation benefits, any other work-related feedback that they have for According to SHRM, uh, the Society for Human Resources Management, about 61% of organizations conduct exits, um, and a 24 Public Sector HR Association, or PSHRA, survey shows that about 74% of employers, um, use exit interviews, uh, as a tool, again, to encourage employee So the reason so many organizations do conduct exit interviews is because they really are a very common and effective strate, strategic tool, um, used to collect feedback, uh, again, on that overall experience of that employee. Um, exits help leadership teams within the department, they help human resources, they help city administration, all of us to gain insight in really how we can enhance their experience, um, and, uh, really enhance our overall employee retention strategies as well. There are several other important strategic tools that we'll talk about, or I will talk about in just a few minutes as well. So we engage with employees in exit interviews in a variety of ways. Um, we're meeting most often with that, uh, exiting employee in person. Um, sometimes the meeting occurs over the phone or virtually, uh, especially if we have an employee who does not give notice or does not give a, a lengthy notice. We, we may reach out by phone or try to meet with them virtually. Um, sometimes that employee is just not otherwise available to meet in person. The employee might choose to submit documents of their own as well, in addition to the questionnaire. Um, sometimes we'll receive, you know, written or typed documents, and then, of course, the HR managers are taking notes while they are, are conducting the interviewer meeting with the employee as well. So I wanna emphasize that completing an exit questionnaire and participating in an exit interview is entirely optional for the exiting employee. Um, the employee who chooses to participate decides if they want to remain anonymous when providing the information, or if they wish to share their name, department, or Exit interviews are conducted by HR managers. Um, as I mentioned earlier, some department leaders might have a discussion with the employee who's leaving the organization that really is kind of an informal exit interview as well, and this can be very beneficial for that department head or department leadership team to hear directly from that employee. So whether formal or informal, um, the exiting employee really can provide valuable feedback and insights on how we can make improvements, um, in the work environment and help to retain other employees within, within, um, the city as well. So exit questionnaires, exit interview notes, and any related documents are first routed within the HR team after the exit is conducted. So the, uh, HR manager routes those to myself as the Director and Beth as the Assistant Director. Um, from there, we'll review the information, and then we, together, really collaborate to discuss, you know, if we need additional conversations with the department leader, um, someone in the, in a leadership position within that department. Um, in some instances, we might engage other HR team members as well. For example, if we have a safety concern that is relayed, we would engage the safety manager then in that discussion as well. Once HR has completed our review, a copy of that exit interview document is provided to the department head. And in the event that there are significant issues, or if there's a pattern of issues that are identified, we will meet with the department head, um, and anyone else from their leadership team that they choose to really discuss strategies to address what those underlying issues are and how we might be able to, uh, address those together. When there are significant issues reported, again, or if we have a pattern of issues that are reported, um, we also address those issues with city administration, and we may make recommendations on, again, what steps we could take to try to, um, you know, support that department and that leadership team. Um, and, but at this point, especially if we have concerns related to a department head, um, city administration would, would be involved in the next steps. So I just wanna talk a little bit about some kind of false narratives that we hear from time to time related to exit interviews. First of all, the, you know, the idea that we chase exit interviews. I wanna reiterate that exit interviews are entirely optional, and while I wish that every exiting employee would participate in an exit, it really is that person's choice. Um, it's just one component of their overall offboarding that they choose to participate in or, or not. Um, the, the HR team is careful to, uh, not in any way portray that the employee is somehow obligated to participate in the exit. Um, another, another narrative that we hear from time to time is that the notes, um, that the HR, are, the notes taken during the exit interview are the HR manager's, um, perception. And so, you know, again, they, they are taking notes while meeting with the employee. The notes are not intended to be a transcript by any means of the exit, um, nor an attempt to, in any way editorialize or, or embellish the information. So that HR manager conducting the exit is really just doing the best job they can in capturing the, um, information being communicated by the employee. Um, occasionally, we'll hear department leaders have a concern about opportunity to share their perspective, and that is a really important piece of this, because we have heard the perspective of the employee, and it's important from the leadership team that we do hear from them as well, um, which is why often we will meet with department leadership teams to discuss what the concerns are that have been brought up, and really consider all of the information in collaborating with that department head, department leadership team, and at times, city administration, to talk about what our best next steps are to resolve, um, any issues that have been relayed. And then occasionally, we hear that, you know, nothing happens with the information. And again, as you saw in the previous slide, we do really take action with all of the information. We value the information. I think our department leadership teams value that information. Um, and so we ensure that that is always shared with those department leaders as well. And, you know, again, that collaboration between HR, uh, the department leadership team, and city admin really is our goal when we are talking through, um, information that came from exit interviews.
Jill, if you meet with the Director, does any of that go in that file? So if I request to file an exit interview, you meet with the Director, and they say, well, it's a little different, or this happened, or here's what we did in regards to this, does that, any, any of that hit the exit interview, or is that a separate file?
I think it depends on the circumstances, right? Notes are typically taken during those conversations. Um, that may not enter the, the file. The exit interviews are stored separately from the employee's file itself. Um, so it depends on the circumstances and, and...
And if there was any corrective action, if the employee reported something that went foul, is there any reported action that the Director then corrected that?
Yes. Again, if that is the case, you know, if it's at the department head level, we would be working with city admin and making recommendations. If it's a leader within the department, we would be working with the department head and making recommendations. Um, and so it could range from notes related to just coaching and additional training all the way through disciplinary action, um, if that was, uh, appropriate.
Thank you.
Next, I wanna talk a little bit about, um, some of our statistics within the city. So this chart just gives you a, a five-year view of the number of separations per year. I wanna emphasize these numbers do include our temporary and our seasonal employees. So those numbers may look large to you on this, on separations, but it includes everyone in all of our employment categories. The number of exit interviews or, uh, exit questionnaires completed is shown in the next column, and then the final column just shows the number of employees who have chosen to have their information be recorded in an anonymous manner. Um, so if you look at 2024, we had 280 separations. Um, these separations, again, include temporary, which might be our Fargo Dome event staff, for example, and seasonal employees that might be working with us throughout the summer. Um, so this is an all-inclusive number. Um, you can see that 60 employees chose to participate in an exit interview or complete a questionnaire. In some cases, it may be both. Um, we, again, we would like to see these numbers be even higher, um, and, and more employees participating in exit interviews. There are some barriers within public employment that I think, you know, we need to acknowledge. Our, our employees are very aware of, um, that information they provide is subject to open records. And so that, you know, in private sector, exit interviews are confidential, and they're stored confidentially, and so that can, you know, is, can be a factor in an employee's decision to participate or not participate. The next table, um, shows our average ratings. Um, so for those employees who completed our questionnaire, um, which actually has a rating, those ratings are reflected in this, in this table. Um, we ask the exiting employee to rate eight categories on a scale of one to 10, with 10 being the best possible rating. And as you can see, the categories are professional development, benefits, career opportunities, supervision received, working conditions, compensation type of work, and whether the job met their expectations or not. Um, when we isolate 2024, we can see that our highest average rating is an 8.8 for supervision received, and our lowest is 7.22 for compensation. Uh, when you look at the five-year average, um, you can see the ratings are relatively stable in most categories. We do see from 2020 to 2024, um, maybe one of the more significant declines within the compensation category. So as the City of Fargo really strives to be an employer of choice in our community, really exit interviews continue to be, uh, an important strategic tool for us to, um, to continue to use. Like any questionnaire or survey or any method of gathering information, the most important factor is really what do we do with that information? Um, so beyond exit interviews, some additional strategic tools, uh, that we are either have or will be implementing include regular check-ins with supervisors, stay interviews at least one time a year for all employees, uh, and then overall employee engagement surveys as well. So with all of these strategic tools, again, the key is really recognizing the positive achievements, and we do hear a lot of positives in the exit interviews, so that's, that's great. You can see our ratings, uh, on average are really relatively high, so, so that is also good. Um, so again, it's just really looking at a commitment to, you know, work together to make improvements in areas where we do have underlying issues, acknowledging that and, and working through that. Um, and then just remembering it takes courage for our employees to share the information, whether it's an exit or during a review, during a check-in, during a stay interview. So it's important to show our employees that we value their feedback and, um, that they see efforts and continuous improvement as well.
Commissioner Kolpak, and Commissioner Strand.
Yeah. First of all, Jill, thank you so much. I think this is such important context, um, given some of the media attention and the public nature of our work. So this was really excellent. I really sincerely appreciate it. I guess, just one comment, and Michael, I don't know if, you don't need to come up, but I just, it's probably more appropriate since our relationship is oversight is with you, and I'm not, you know, it's not, it's not in my purview here, but I do have a, I have a thought, when we go back to employer of choice, and thinking about, in my five departments, I know take exit interviews and this information very seriously and really respect the information that comes back. I think it's important to all of them that they really are taking it seriously, that there are actionable items that come out to continue, have continuous improvement in those departments if there are concerns. Um, so I guess I would like to see some kind of documentation of that work in response to the potential public exposure of some comments, just to show that the city does out of respect for the exiting employee, but also out of respect for the management in the department, that, um, we, that we value this input, and I appreciate it's one tool in the toolbox, um, but I just think that's an important component, so I would like to see something addressed if, if possible there in the future. Those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Strand.
Thank you. Jill, I'm, I'm curious. Exit interviews are open records?
That's correct.
Ongoingly with an employee who has personnel evaluations, person, uh, employment improvement plans, things like that, are those open records?
Yes, they are.
And, and do we on, uh, regular, so on a regular ongoing basis, do you try, I guess my question is, how do we take that information proactively upfront and, and make sure that later on in the exit interview, a word that's out there in the... A word that's out there in the community, the public language is sour grapes. If you have an employee who's left, it's always easy to say, "Oh, they're, it's sour grapes." How do you balance all that with the working relationship going forward as it was all along to the moment where they leave and then unload? If that's, I don't even know if that's what happens, but...
Yeah, you know, we as an employer and just, you know, organizations across the country have really implemented some of the strategies that you see on the screen so that we're getting this information well before someone is exiting. And, you know, sometimes we do have employees who leave under, you know, difficult circumstances, right? Maybe their performance has been addressed or there's been an incident that has been addressed and they're just simply unhappy, may not agree with how that issue was addressed. And so that certainly is factored in as we review the information from them, have conversations with the department heads. Often, our HR managers have had day-to-day working knowledge of those issues being addressed throughout that employment period. But the more that we can encourage ongoing conversations through check-ins and stay interviews, hopefully, we are at the point we get to an exit interview, hopefully, we know why that employee might be choosing to exit at that point. And if there are concerns that we're able to address, that we're addressing them, you know, as early as we possibly can. That's always our goal. But unfortunately, sometimes we do get to the exit stage and, you know, before we learn about concerns or before the department leadership team learns about concerns. There still is something to be learned from that exit information. It may be too late for that employee who's leaving the city, but certainly for their peers, you know, whether in their department or across the city, there's typically something that we can still learn and take away from those exits.
Just to continue, you know, I'm not an HR person, but 360-degree reviews, is that the right word? Where people review each other? And that's a debatable topic. And I think we've done it some, but we don't do it routinely. Help me understand that relative to exits. Because one of, I've heard the downsides to the 360s too is people can trash their leader or take them out at the knees and go after them. And I'm just trying to figure out this balance of current and then when people leave.
Right. So that's a great question. The check-ins, as they are structured, is intended to be two-way interaction about how, you know, all aspects of employment. In a future phase of implementing the check-ins, we have discussed, you know, is our 360 reviews right for our organization? Like anything, there are pros and cons. It does take a lot of training and, you know, ensuring that that it really is constructive feedback that we can use to make improvements or that leader can make improvements or feedback, constructive feedback coming from a peer. So that is something we intend to assess and, you know, has been discussed as we talk about reviews and now, you know, transitioning to ongoing check-ins. We hope, again, that the check-ins structured as more of a two-way interaction versus a performance review that's delivered by the leader. We hope that that will encourage more conversations again earlier on when we're able to address concerns.
For an organization this size, I'm always impressed by the department heads who really oftentimes know why somebody quit. Better job, better opportunity, geography, family, a variety of different things. So you have 280 people leaving and they have to do 60 interviews. It's kind of interesting. You know, not everybody interviews, but a lot of people leave for a variety of reasons. And the only frustration I would have is if there's some people like we could retain, your regular check-ins should help protect us to do that. Something that ours or something they don't like. I know in the water department, there's shift changes certain people didn't like, so they switched some things around to try to take care of that. But I think that it's always interesting what you learn about the organization. I think what we'd like, Jill, maybe on a yearly basis for the commission, just a checkout of what's going on with our employees. John oftentimes gets caught on morale or different things going on. But maybe sometimes just, "How are we doing with our employees? Is there anything as commissioners we can do better?" Any way we can help support that. And I know, you know, different departments are difficult to recruiting. I think whatever the commissioners can help out or do something in that regard. But thank you for giving the report. Any other discussion? Thank you.
Thank you.
Liaison Commissioner Simon updates. Commissioner Strand.
You mentioned both of mine. I was going to talk about the MLK event, which was just astounding this year. The talent we have in this community and young people and the messaging that they advanced to us is just a profound, great event. So that was the Human Rights Commission and the city's sponsorship with Fred Dissonance, and they're just a great event. Lastly, you had also mayor mention the airport and information about the airport. I was going to add to that. Paula Ekman was just named chairman of the Airport Authority. So her term is just beginning with this next meeting. So we'll have a new leadership there.
Thank you. Mr. Kulpak.
Thank you. I have one slide tonight on a water treatment plant. They've just completed a really important project that began in 2017. So it's, the regional water treatment plant is now treating water with granular activated carbon filters. Filter upgrade is being funded with a 75% EPA grant, up to $4.8 million. So the water treatment plant and water reclamation, both and solid waste, continue to leverage with a capital strategic plan a number of grants and opportunities that come up in a really succinct way. And employees of the water treatment plant have been working on this, as I said, since 2017 and it's on tack for completion. All tap water for Fargo customers is now either treated with granular activated carbon filtration or reverse osmosis. And both of these processes improve the quality of our water. So thank you very much.
Which one tastes better?
They're both delicious. They're both delicious.
Just curious on that. Please Chief, we passed on a consent agenda modular vehicle barrier system. I'm going to ask the chief to send out just a picture to the commissioners what that looks like. But rather than having garbage truck dump trucks blocking off a street, there's a new modular system that they can put up that would, in New Orleans event where a truck went into the crowd, would be prevented. And it's a great idea. It's going to be able to help us in our events we have around the community to keep from any kind of vehicle coming into that crowd event. But I want to congratulate the chief on finding a modality that works for us and it's going to be part of our safety money that pays for that. But good work. Commissioner Turnberg.
A couple of high points in, from last year from the library, that the library had record circulation in 2024 with 1,059,690 items circulated and record programming attendance in '24 with 43,421 attendees.
Wow. Are you one of the 1 million?
You bet.
Commissioner Pepgarn. We have two resident comments tonight. First comment would be Apostle Vendi. Vendi?
My name is Apostle Zari Avuni. The Lord have put in my heart to come and pray for the city. Everyone in the city, I'm coming to pray. Before I pray, there is a scripture I have to open for us to see or someone can read it. In the book of Hebrew, chapter 13, verse 17, it talks about how to listen to our leaders, how to obey the authority. So it's the word of God that wants us to pray for our leaders and obey the authority. So I'm going to pray for the commissioners, the police department, fire department, children. I'm going to pray for that. Heavenly Father, we thank you. We commit our city talent to your hand. I pray for those who are working so hard, our leaders, taking care of us in every need in the city. I pray for your word. I pray for your mercy. I pray for your love. I pray for the schools. I pray for the children. I pray for the fire department. I pray for the police department. I pray for your total protection upon their lives. Father, we love you. Without you, we are nothing. Help us to stand strong and build our city for your glory. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Ryan Nutterville?
Hi, I'm Ryan, Shane Nutterville's brother. I'd just like to start by reading this quick. "With a past of law issues, time has passed. Things that happened in your past shouldn't stay with you forever." That was said a couple commission meetings ago. About a bar owner. Where was that same energy when it came to my brother? You have Nicole Brown on the news bad-talking my brother. Your guys' justification of shooting and executing my brother has literally just been bad-mouthing him. 30 days after his shooting, the same person that said this quote got demoted for saying stuff about indigenous people. And that's when I started realizing my brother's never going to get justice. Because the time from it, when someone finally said something about him saying that, just spoke enough for me. I'm glad someone did say something, but that timeframe just shows. If you're indigenous, cops can kill you. And I'm not stopping. I'm not stopping because I made that promise when I finally was able to see him 14 days later, when you guys finally released him to us. And I still haven't stopped. Even with my severe mental health, I'm doing all this. And I will find a way. And I'm still asking for anyone to help because it wasn't right. He didn't deserve to be shot. There's absolutely no reason. There's other things I want to ask for and I want to say, but I'm starting to get a little upset now. Thanks.
Why don't I speak?
Basically, Ryan's to talk. That's who we allow one speaker. If you want to speak another time, you can speak another time. We're done with public hearing. There's no other speakers. We will adjourn.